Turner County Board of Education meeting. Here's your agenda. Ms. Mizell is going to be giving a special education update. I don't think that staff recognition so much. Kristi Casemiro is our new librarian. Board actions. Let's see there. Let's see if I can hold this a little more steady for you. Guaranteed maximum price. This is the maximum price for the construction of the new middle, high school complex. Middle, high school complex is being built in phases on the site of the current high school and middle school campus here. They will be tearing down some buildings, leaving some buildings, and that's what they're going to do. The architect is here and some other agents for the engineering company are here. And you see, there is no closed session for anything in here. Mostly it's personnel with the school board is concerned. So unless they amend the agenda, they cannot have a closed session tonight. All right. Excuse me about that. From left to right, right there is where Superintendent Craig Matthews will sit. That is the Chair Sandra Blue. David Mathis is not going to be with us tonight in person. He will be here by phone. That is Cornelius Ball. That is Ann Kendrick. And that is Sam Brown. Mr. Brown is the very much longest-serving member of the Turner County School Board. He's been here for, goodness gracious, well over 20 years. Craig, just think of it as a substitute teacher.
Oh, yeah. It worked.
Yeah. Glad to be here today. Is that it? Oh, you're articulate, okay. Oh, no, that's weird. The case of the missing podium.
So, guess who was alone that whole time? Nobody would care. Because apparently this is all news, that our girl, she's not a woman. She's just surviving.
No, it feels good. I feel good even. I'm told what, yeah.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the order for September 11th Regular Board meeting for Turner County Board of Education. And now we will have our education.
Y'all love me. We just, we come in and just thank you for the opportunities you can give us. And let's ask that you strengthen us and lead us and guide us to make the most of those opportunities so that we can make Turner County a better place. Be able to now in this meeting and make the best decision possible.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, united in this book, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got it right on. Oh. All right, now, vote please. Vote for the... Yes, proof of agenda. I got all subs there. Okay, to prove the agenda. Everybody, lay with agenda. Yes. Now, we have time on our agenda here for student staff recognition. I'll turn it over to Mr. Matthews.
Yes, ma'am. For tonight, we have Ms. Mizell, our Special Education Director, to come and give us an update about special education. Ms. Mizell.
As y'all know, we've been excited, please, since teacher-driven projects over the past two years. And my little people can't talk to share how excited they are about these. So I brought some pictures in, just so you would know what all we have been doing. Yeah, I just have it over there. All right, so, um... Y'all see it? All right, so with this room, I want y'all to remember that these are our youngest students, our early interviewing students, ages three to about nine enjoy this room. It's designed for the autistic child and the child who's struggling with severe ADHD. These are children who cannot self-regulate. These are children who have not had the experience to play with others. They haven't learned that skill to social play. And the way we have this designed is to incorporate the, in the environment, play and learn without realizing you're wrong. Okay, that's the design. Okay, so in this component, you're going to see just sensory items. This is tactile sensory. This up here is motion sensory. I wish you could see it with the light off in there. Even with the light coming through the door, the kids really love it because the lights move around them. And as they touch them, the lights move. Okay, so the kids are really getting the hang of it. All right? And then these are just some more pictures of that space so that you can see the full benefits of it. And then I've got these sensory panels that you can see. The favorite for our children who are unable really to get into too many of the different components because they maybe like the, one child I'm thinking of, he has severe muscular dysphoria of movement. He is dependent on others' raw movement. And then you can see that as well. All right, so then you're going to see my little people, okay? So I want to tell you about the, this canoe is the blue canoe you saw on the subway. He loves it. He's healthy. He's safe. He's goofy, all right? And he gets in there and he thinks nobody can see him. So until we find him, he actually interacts. So it's really great. All right, this one over here is pretty fabulous, okay? Because they talk into a mic. And the lights light up at the end. So they're encouraged to say a word, and they get to see their word in light. Okay, so it's really great. And like, you see how the top dipped right up? It's because she only said the first half of the words. So it really helps them to bridge it over. And if they only say the second half of the word, so they're dropping their initial consonant sounds, it only picks up the end. So they can see and like how they're working. And then, as you can see, this is his favorite place to be. And I have parent permission to show y'all. Let me be clear. They are as excited about these as the kids are, okay? And so these right, basically right here, he is, he is just so exploring. He's actually starting to move his hands and extend. And then, of course, he has a friend who is in there with him, and it's so great. Now, my little, I'm not going to say his name, my little boy over here, he is so excited about the light too. He goes around the room trying to get everybody to come see that he can change the lights, okay? So that's what he's doing. He's trying to get the other teacher in the room to come look because he changed it to blue. And he's so excited. And you see, we have the little big circles that are in the room. Those are the rocking, rocking balls. Okay, so I'm getting the rocking ball. And that's two things he, we figured out that he's able to participate in. And those little printers on top of them are weighted. So it gives him a sense of security, you know, when there's movement. Okay? And this right here, I almost said his name again. All right, so he loves this thing right here. These little rollers, you can't see it in the pictures, but they light up. And they, every time they come down, and he has learned, "up," and he has learned to say, "more." He wants to do it more. Okay, so I'm really excited about that. In addition to our modest, severe, and profound students that have been using it, Mr. Simpson then have found that some of our kids who have DMDD and ADHD are also able to start their day in this room and be able to then calm a little bit, release some energy, because this room is an energy room, okay? This is an energy release design. All right, so with that, they're able to actually just be able to calm themselves. Maybe they had a hard moment, bus drivers not their friend, whatever the case might have been. And the kids that he's been using it with are students who are actually in regular classroom and they're in there for maybe 10 minutes. And they're able to go to class, y'all, and be in the classroom for extended periods of time where we weren't able to even start them in the room. We were never making it to the classroom. So it's really worked for them as well. So I swear to God, y'all, because, you know, without y'all's approval, we wouldn't have been able to move forward with this project.
So, Cecilia, how many of those things do you have as a better day to do?
Right now, we have three. Usually it just helps them mentally get ready for the day. Some of my kids, they just need to calm down and get themselves ready for the day. But we will be using more.
Now, what times do they, they're giving you all the time all day, aren't they?
No, ma'am. So with that little group, we have time set up during the day. With the autism classroom, a lot of what we do are, you do this now, and then we get to do your choice fun activity kind of things. So they work up to doing that. Right now, we have scheduled times in that room for three times in the morning. And most of the time, it's only 10 to 15 minutes. It's not extended periods because we don't want to overuse the excitement, if you understand what I'm saying. So we go in, and we're in there for 10 to 15 minutes, and then we go back to the classroom and we work and we do our stuff, and then we can earn the right to go back. And it's become really, especially with Ms. McCord with speech, she's saying a lot of language. She started actually going into that room and doing language in there, and then coming out and doing the last 15 minutes with some of her students who are really starting to try to talk in there where with her, when they're sitting one-on-one, they don't really have anything to share, you know? So this is really working out.
Thank you, Ms. Mizell. Between that sensory room, the room in the high school, and the therapeutic room, we've got a lot of innovative things going on in this bed. So thank you, Ms. Mizell.
And before long, y'all will get to see some therapeutic drumming from our students. I think that'll be exciting.
Next, and then the file is public participation.
Yes, ma'am. We have Ms. Kristi Casemiro from Victoria Evans Memorial Library here and some of her support team as well. So she wanted to come give us an update. There's been a lot going on at the, at the library, and she's going to come give us an update. So, Ms. Casemiro, please come on up.
Thank you so much for having me. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Kristi Casemiro. I'm the branch manager at the library, and I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you so much to the board for your support and your continued support and your additional support that you've given to the library. It's incredible, and we couldn't do without y'all. We are really busy getting as many people into the library and using the library as we can right now. We are doing a lot of programs for kids. It's currently Library Sign-Up Fund, and we're relaunching 1,000 books before kindergarten. So we're encouraging parents for kids ages zero to five to come into the libraries and library cards and read to their kids and teach their kids to read. We're doing that with our entire regional board. We've got our board CFO who is here, our regional CFO, and then we have Kristen who's in charge of programming, and you'll be seeing her in the schools. She is going to be coming in bi-weekly to read to the elementary school and to possibly the middle school. So she's going to be around. And then, of course, we have Sammy, who's probably all know who is one of our board members. So we're excited about that. We have recently introduced weekly storytime at our library again, and we are doing a monthly activity. This Friday is Slime. So if any of you guys have kids or anybody who's going to come, we have Slime. We're doing that for fun on Friday. Every other week, we're going to be doing basic adult computer literacy classes for free, and we're excited about helping our patrons learn how to use the computer. We are also doing a monthly adult book club. We're going to be meeting this, I believe it's the last week of the month, and we've already had like four or five adults come in to get the book. We also want to do some kids book clubs, and we want to resume our kids chess club. We had it over the summer. Kids love it. They would come in, some of them knew how to play chess, some of them didn't, but by the end of the hour, they said that they were really good at it and that they could beat their parents now. So it was, it was a really fun time. We've had some great community events that we did, that community did, with the police and the fire department and snow bids and indoor games, and that was a big hit. And then we participated at the police night out at Ashburn where we gave out information from the library to 375 people we counted. So that was really good, getting them to learn about the library. We also raised some money in our indoor yard sale, getting some items that have been stored in our closets for a long time. And all the money that we raised in the indoor yard sale and with our new book sale has gone to buy new children's books. We have purchased hundreds of dollars worth of children's books, and we're hopeful to receive some grants to do more. We're continuing to sell items, which will purchase books with the money sold, the money earned. So that's exciting. Last week and this week, we've had a couple of homeschool families come in, as they do, and they have told me, you know, they feel like the library is more energized and they love the feeling of the kids' room because we've updated it with some decor and new books. And we're reading out the books in the children's section and in the adult section, of books that haven't been checked out in 10 years or more, and adding in fresh books. And it just warms my heart because our parents say that they just love coming in. And so in October, we're going to start a monthly, maybe bi-monthly, homeschool club. So we're going to do an activity. I don't know whether it will be yet, but I'm going to lead an activity that will be appropriate for all ages and then just an opportunity for all the homeschool groups in the area to get together to meet each other. The Sylvester Library has recently done that, and it was a big hit there. So we're doing that. Our circulation stats are pretty good. In June, they were up 14% from last June, and we also had almost double the amount of patrons enter into the library this June than we did last June. So that's awesome. I'm very excited for next summer to have a summer reading program go throughout the month of June and the month of July. Our social media is amazing. Sammy handles a lot of our social media, and we've had at least one new follower a day since she started it up. So I think the last time I talked to you, we had 226, and now we have about 296 people. So, yeah. And then, of course, we're so grateful to Mr. Ben for continuing to support the library throughout the newspaper and on the front page. Yeah, so really, we're just very interested in supporting the community however we can and providing opportunities for learning and educational purposes. And we have flyers up front at the front desk saying, "Please let us know what you'd like to see in the library," and we're doing everything we can to accommodate all these classes.
That's good. You're doing a great job.
Oh, thank you.
I do follow it through the paper and all too. It's one, one, I could tell just by the pictures, there's a lot of things going on, and it was moving on pretty good.
Thank you guys for having me.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Next time you check, please put "follow" to the line.
Okay, next, we have Owen Taylor-Davidson.
Hey, Ms. Smith, I got your own speaker, and I don't know what happened. My screen went black and it wouldn't come back. I couldn't, couldn't connect. I couldn't see what I was doing, so. Can you turn the video on? Got your own phone table. Phone can be pulled from the main.
I see. Hello, David. Okay, we're at the part in our agenda where we, item number six, is actually requiring the recommendations for the superintendent. First, we have approval of the minutes. Can I get a button for that? Kendrick and, say, Brown. You have your first. Kendrick and Brown. All in favor, announce. Do you want, do you want to say? Okay, next is the, we need a motion to approve the July 2023 financial statement. Ball, Mr. Ball? And Ms. Kendrick? All in favor, announce. Okay, item C is approval of the slosh budget. Can I get a motion? Mr. Brown and Kendrick. Ms. Kendrick. All in favor? Can you get it up big? Unanimous. Okay, Cannon Plant. We need to approve the Cannon Plant reconciliation sheet. Okay, Mr. Ball? Kendrick? All in favor?
I did have a question. So we, I think we must have had a large purchase for Cannon Plant. Have you already reviewed those?
But we're, it, it was in our balance, and that has gone, let our balance go back down. And as you can see, as we're selling cans, our balance is going back up.
Will you take those out? Cannon Plant phones or?
We were, at one time, we were not thinking there was going to be nothing. I was going to make that truck load over with cans and stuff, but there was.
I just didn't see it on here as well. Out of this, because we're last.
All right, and we, we already voted, so, this unanimous. Okay, we have approval of the HR recommendations. Did you want to tell us about this?
Yes, ma'am. We have three recommendations. One is for Patricia Aris as a part-time lunchroom worker. The second one is Kimberly Hudson, a career professional. And then the third is Ms. Amy Smith, a lunchroom worker replacing Ms. Lisa West. We did have one resignation, Ms. Lisa Smith.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Ball, that's unanimous. And first, please give the second, Kendrick. Okay, Ball and Kendrick, all in favor, unanimous. Okay, item number F, approval of the FY twenty-four CTAE Consolidated Planer Budget. Kendrick, get a second. Can I get a second? Did you like?
That's good.
That's okay, that did it. We wanna put in notice here, that's right. All in, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, G is approval of twenty-first CCLC grant award notes. Can I get a motion for that?
A motion.
Okay, Kendrick, and a second. Brown, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, we discussed the other night about the approval of the bus purchase, and that, and, um, so we need to make a vote on that. Can we get a motion? The Brown, the second?
Is that still gonna cost us thirty-six thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. That's over what the state gives us, the price of the bus.
Second.
That's Kendrick, second, all in favor? Unanimous, second. Okay, I, I is approval of the guaranteed maximum price, GMP.
Yes, ma'am, so, at the work session, representatives from JCI were here then, and they're here again tonight, and they presented to you a little bit about the process we've taken, their sense, taking bids, and determining the GMP. They presented our GMP to us at thirty-seven, eight, fourteen, seven, sixty-eight. And that is what the GMP proposal is. Anything that you'd like to add to that, Mr. Jones, Mr. Pritchard?
So, how many questions?
Any questions regarding the GMP?
Which does it pretty hard? Okay.
And, you know, and we discussed it the other night, there, there's part of the, um, um, part of those items in the project that are gonna be our responsibility. We were looking at the availability of funding for that. And you get my document right up. I got it. You got stuck in the GMP on one of the documents. Um, so, I emailed you this document earlier today, earlier today, for your view. So, you went and see it the first time I got to the meeting. What I did, I took our estimated costs, and I divided them into fixed and variable costs. And you can see that the fixed cost at the top are the paint for the architects and kitchen equipment, special and specials on the project, and then, variable costs. This is, things will be provided in the project that could be anywhere from the minimum price to the estimated maximum price. What we did is, is look at some prices of things that have recently cost us, what we made purchases. JCI assisted with us, Alvin Barrett assisted with us, and even some other projects that they've recently done to, to determine what these prices are. And so, I calculated the minimum, and then, I calculated the maximum. And as you can see, there's a large difference, about a million dollar difference in when all of those good costs is that we went with the maximum versus the minimum. The third column there is the option. Basically, as it stands right now, this is what I would recommend that we did. Some of these causes, costs could be a little bit different as we move forward, and as we get a better idea of what our, our funding will be when we sell bonds. We'll know exactly next week, when we approve that, we'll know exactly the amount of funding that we will have, and then, we can start making determinations about what our budget will be for each one of these items. So, that was, uh, that was options for what our cost would be for our portion of the project. That's not included in the GMP. So, below the black line, you'll see some funding sources. There's the estimated funds available minus the GMP to get us a net of ninety-six, nine-seventy-six, seven-eighty-four. And then, I looked, you know, we discussed the possibility of investing some of our bonds, funds, investing some of our savings, and there's a few different options that we have on that. But I, I calculated what the investments would earn us with a two percent interest or a four percent interest. And then, as you can see, there's three different types of investments, or three different amounts and lengths of year to invest these funds that we have. We, we wouldn't be investing, investing all of our proceeds, we need to keep some of them bank, because there are gonna be some immediate bills to pay as soon as we start the project. And, and one of those, first one would be site work, which is not refundable by the state. It's on us, so that is an out-of-pocket expense for us. So, we need to keep some funds in the bank to make payments for the first of the project. Then, I, I added the school nutrition funds that would be available for cafeteria furniture and kitchen equipment at one-hundred-and-ninety thousand. So, you see the totals for the two percent investment, if we earn two percent investment, and if we earn four percent investment. You'll see that, that some of this, I suggested we invest it in a Georgia Fund One or in a SLUG. A SLUG is a, a government option to invest funds that is liquid, meaning we can get our money out when we need it, make payment, we don't have to leave it in for a certain amount of time. And that would be through a company like Raymond James or somebody else, if we decide on to do that later. But investing these, uh, this money could earn us a considerable amount of income for our portion of the project. If it, if it did four percent of the life of all of these, we're looking at like six-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars that it could bring in. I did get a history of what the Georgia Fund One has been paying. Over the last year, Georgia Fund One has averaged four-point-three percent. Currently, it's at five-point-one, I believe, five-point-one percent is what Georgia Fund... So, right now, it's very good. But, and over the last year's estimate is good. But, the, um, the thought is the interest rates are increasing, which would increase our investment increase and get positive for us, so we can expect it's four percent off of these investments, by the advice that I've been given. But, in the worst-case scenario, if it's only two percent, or if it's zero percent, is the actual worst-case scenario, we, we need to be prepared for that. So, I took the, the minimum cost and, um, and subtracted the, the amount of money that we would have guaranteed without any investments, and that's what's, that's what you see on that first green block down at the bottom. So, we're, we've got enough to cover, but just there. And then, I, I did the maximum cost with no investments, and that's what's in the red block, block. It's red for a purpose, we could not go to those funds without some considerable other income coming in. So, that, that option is really not an option of, of the maximum cost with no interest income from our investments. And then, the third one down is the difference in using our option. And with no investment funding, as you can see, I've got it in yellow, that we're cautionary there, because that is a considerable, another considerable out-of-pocket expense at four-sixty-three. We need to make sure of some things before we commit to that. But then, the last two, one of them, the first one is our, using our optional cost with two percent investments. As you can see, we're very close to being able to, to meet that. And if we, um, if, if we didn't purchase the, up, up top, the, move it back up top, you see I got camera system as the option for all new. If we did transfer some of our camera system and repurpose some of that equipment, that number would go down. If it went, if it only cost us twenty thousand dollars to move the camera system, then that'd be a fifty thousand dollar savings, which gets that down just below a hundred thousand dollars on the second yellow block at the bottom. And then, the, the bottom is using the difference in our option, optional cost with four percent return on our investments. And as you can see, we, we can cover the cost of that considerably, we've got a good cushion there to cover the cost of that. Now, as a, as a, as a backup, we do have our SLOSS five that I've listed there. You see the balance of SLOSS five? But, the original plan was to hold SLOSS five along and not spend it toward the project, and just have it for other needs as they arise. So, you know, if, if, if things go well, we would have some of those funds. But if, if we wanna continue to hold on to those and have them for any other needs that, that may arise, we could leave that money along in the bank. And then, also, just wanted to, to mention this, and, and, oh, oh, please don't get nervous now. Contingency. We had several discussions about contingency. In the project, there's three percent contingency. And so, you can see that's one million, one-hundred-and-three thousand dollars. That's a cushion for us, and it's a cushion for the contractor, for JCI, because that's money that's in the GMP that if something comes up in the project where it's an, you know, unforeseen expense, they start digging in the ground and they find something, or if there's some other kind of cost that come in that was unforeseen, it comes out of contingency. If everything goes perfectly smooth, or, or just, you know, really close to being smooth with it, well, the contingency won't get used, and that's money that we would basically keep. We would never, that would never be a part of the GMP at the end of the project. But we won't know until the end of the project, or as we're getting close to the end of the project. And so, you know, if there is a cushion, if not used, it, we could start, we could use it once we're completing, to do some other things, or as we're completing. If some of that contingency money could be freed up, we could be using it to make some of those purchases for, for some of these items that would be at the end of the project, like landscaping and that type of thing.
How quick would you, uh, three-point-five be? That, that's currently doing fun now, right?
Yes, sir.
How, how quick would you want to go here and make that adjustment?
Soon as we can. If I can get, if we can get our accounts set up, the Georgia Fund One, to get it best, that's what we would do.
We still have the other fund out there?
Yes, sir. It would be somewhere in the negative of four million after we invested three-point-five.
Well, I have one last question. So, throughout the, I guess, throughout the duration of the project, how many draws were we doing? And did the draws line up with the, uh, the investments here? So, we, would we have to pull these investments out early to make the draw up, or actually, are they aligned with the schedule?
Quickly, we have a payment schedule, an estimated payment schedule, which kind of depends on how the work is actually completed. But they provided us with a timeline of that for the twenty-six months of the project, and, and it's got all of our incomes on there, monthly, and, and then, it's got where the state reimbursers will come in there. And then, we got, then we have over here what the expected is for our payments to JCI. And, you know, it dwindles up in the middle of the project, and it dwindles off toward the end of the project, except for the very last part, where there's a, a reserve on the, on the final payment of the project. So, we've been using that to, and will continue to use that through the project to, to monitor, to help us monitor our cash flow. Anything on that, Mr. Jones?
No, it's, it's, and, and the bill in its month, is how we set it up.
Right. No, and it does, we have to complete the work, make the payment, before we can submit reimbursement to the state, so it does lag, because we do need to keep some cash.
Well, I, I was just concerned if we, if we, uh, since we're using for one-year investments, my, my, my process was, like, this is one-on-five, we're twenty-four months. Just wondering how long, you know, will we be able to keep the investments, and if I actually need to draw for the needs to do it for?
Right. Um, and it, it, uh, it leaves around five million available in the bank for, for making payments. If...
Plus the state funds. So, the state funds will be reimbursed, we don't give those up for...
No, so we get all bonded, and nothing else.
Right.
And we'll have upfront, we'll have the, the three and a half that we currently have, and then, all of our bond proceeds, which would be seventeen million, okay, somewhere around there, sixteen, seventeen million. So, you're talking about, you know, nineteen, twenty million upfront, and then, we're investing thirteen point five of that, leaving the rest available, um, in, in the camp of cash flow. That, those could be invested, too, but I just, that was the number we determined would be the best to leave in there, at, looking at that cash flow sheet we talked about. And a lot of these expenses are towards the end of the project, and so, we'll have a better idea of where we're at as we move forward. Some of them will take order in upfront, or sooner than the end of the project. We want to have it in place when as needed, but... You have a question?
You already agreed on that? Okay, I'm getting the first one of the guaranteed maximum price.
Good motion.
Mr. Ball, I've got a second.
Second.
Kendrick, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, everybody, it's been a part of it. That's why you never do that, that, that much right there. You put a lot of work into that, thank you.
Okay, item number seven, only agenda, is the second reading policy, IDA one, interscholastic activities, grade nine through twelve.
Yes, ma'am, this is our, our second reading, so it does need your approval.
Good commission. A motion for Ms. Kendrick, and a second. Brown, well, she did, he did go for Brown, all in favor? Unanimous. Now, we refer to information items for the...
Forward. All right, I included this document in your packet. This is our, our, our bond rating information. So, we've been working on this extensively with Raymond James Reps and, and with Moody's Investor Service to help us get our bond rating. It has been advertised, this is the advertising. There's a lot of, they've worked this on in to provide them financial information and information about our project coming up, and the whole history of turn accounting. And it's quite extensive in, in what we've provided for. And so, we, we got a good bond rating, our, our rating was a, um, an A. As, I don't know, uh, that's, it's about the middle of bond ratings. On the Moody's scale, there's three different scales, you can use, Moody's, on the Moody's scale, it's different. Flip over to page four, if you will, it's kind of hard to see, it's on the back of the second page. The number's kind of hard to see, don't block with that, that's four. So, you can see our, our lowest rating was a BA in the resident income section, and there's really nothing we can do about that, except we're providing better jobs, and that's what we're doing, so... Uh, that was our, our lowest rating. You can see all of our other ratings average out at A. The score indicated was an A-one, but our signed rating was a, was a A-two. And so, Raymond James Reps, I thought was a, a very good rating force. The plan now is to, uh, is to, that, that is, this is advertised, it, it, they will be working with... Um, it, it, they will be, we're working with potential buyers over the next week as they make calls and ask questions about, um, our bond rating and bond availability. Raymond James will be, uh, working with them and helping to advertise. Um, and then next Wednesday, um, they will price them. And on Wednesday, we will actually, um, on, on Wednesday, we will actually have a, um, a order period where people can buy the bonds. Um, and that'll, we'll know on Wednesday what, um, our bonds are scheduled to be sold for. We will know what our, um, estimated, uh, income from the bond sales are. And so we'll have that on Wednesday, be able to get it to you and look over it in order to have it approved at our board meeting on Thursday night. Where, whenever our bond sales will be, so. The, uh, Raymond James, he is working with our local banks in the bond sales and, and they will have all the people to buy these bonds. And feel like that's important. All right, um, we discussed the, the conference. Everybody's on track to participate in the conference. The, the one question that I, and it may be outside, but I, I did not have, so I need to make sure. Are, are we wanting to begin the strategic planning and have the, uh, uh, community engagement meeting in November or January? What was, um? November, okay. I, I had a question down and I just didn't, didn't circle it one, so. I'll try to take the SBA Strategic Planning Services and that. And, uh, we'll get the ball rolling with that and look to plan a, a meeting to train all of you sometime in October. So we can get, and we're going, we're going to do the, the whole board training. We'll create the, the three of them and have the whole board training. So that'll be the training and SLOSH analysis. Okay? Cause of Career Academy meeting on Wednesday at twelve, please come. This will be our final meeting before submitting our application on Friday. And then, one, do want to remind you, we have our call meeting on the twenty-first of six o'clock. Same you, the three.
Set to Mr. Brown, Ball, all in favor? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay.